Okay, so I understand it has to be under new business and it would be 16.1. But you're asking that it be moved up?
That's right, yes.
So it would still be 16.1 new business, but with council's approval we can move it up.
Well, unless it can be done under announcement or is that inappropriate?
No.
Okay, that's fine.
So if you're...
Yeah, I'd like to deal with it.
If council approves it, we can move it up earlier.
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Fortini?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to have a discussion on Avondale Park.
So is that another new item? 16.2?
Do I do the...
Avondale Park, was it?
Sorry, Madam, do I do the consent now or I have to wait? The consent, I wait?
I am not there yet.
Okay.
Okay. So this is just to, a removal by councillor Bowman, seconded by councillor Willans, the agenda, the regular council meeting be approved as printed and circulated. All those in favor? That's carried. Oh, is it amended? Moving on to the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, do any members have a declaration of pecuniary interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act for any matter to be considered on today's agenda? Is that where you wanted to speak, Mr. Fortini?
Sorry, under consent, yes.
Under consent, okay. There's no other, now we're moving on to the adoption of the minutes. We're now ready to move to the next item of public business on today's agenda. This is item three minutes. We have the following council minutes before us, the minutes of July 5th to the council meeting of August 9th as approved and printed and circulated. They're moved by councillor Bowman, seconded by councillor Willans. All those in favor? I don't actually have a... All those in favor? Carrie, thank you. On the consent motion, the items listed with an asterisk on the agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial. The consent motion is to adopt this matter on today's agenda without the need for a separate discussion on the item unless a member requests a separate discussion. Does any member wish to add items or to remove items from the consent motion on the agenda? Councillor Fortini?
I'd like to place 8.19 in consent. 8.19.
Into consent?
Into consent, it's been already approved and it's been working on it already. It's already working. I don't know what to...
Okay, councillor Bowman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to remove item 12.1, the ombudsman's report. I just have a couple of questions about it.
Okay. Any other questions, changes? Moved by councillor Willans, seconded by councillor Bowman, as amended. All those in favor? Our first announcement is regarding the 2017 United Way campaign.
leadership team, staff and members of public.
Craig is here. He's our manager of traffic services, public works and engineering, and he's taken on
My name is Craig Coomer and I have the pleasure of being the chair for the 2017 United Way
the much anticipated task again of chair of 2017 United Way campaign.
campaign. This is why I'm here to provide an update of our 2017 campaign. This year's campaign continues to focus on increasing our participation and engagement
Councillor Miles is the council sponsor. Did you want to speak before him?
No, I just...
and ensuring that our campaign is inclusive.
Okay. Take it away. Welcome, Craig.
We have already seen an uplift in participation and engagement in our campaign events. So I just want to share with you three of our campaign successes so far to date. The first one being a Great Wolf Lodge event was offered in June. We actually sold out on this event and we ended up selling 180 rooms to staff and their families across the corporation that we met with Great Wolf Lodge and they offered up discounted rates. And that one event has raised over $6,500 for our campaign. The second event that we hosted was what was called a Living on the Edge event. It was held at Century Gardens. We had 79 participants across the corporation from all different departments. So again, when we're trying to encourage engagement, participation across the corporation, being inclusive, we're trying to outreach to all the different areas within the corporation to participate. And this was a simulation so that staff could understand what it would be like living in poverty for a month. So they took us through a half-day session and we went, had to deal with all the different type of agencies that would be represented through United Way and participants had to get through a day and through a month in poverty. And finally, with our night's table is one of the agency partners with United Way and through some of our partnerships with the other events that have been happening, National Public Works Week, we had sell at Brampton and the Living on the Edge event. We've actually been able to raise and actually donate more than 2,000 pounds of food to the night's table this year. And that was something that had encouraged us through last year's campaign because during the summer months, that's when the shelves are the bearish. So we wanted to make sure that through some of our events, again, we gave back to one of the agencies that are represented. And I also want today to provide you with an update of our ongoing campaign events. And I really want to draw your attention to the first two bullets, our campaign kickoff. So that will be occurring on August 30th. It'll be at Gage Park. And we're actually going to hold it in conjunction with our bus pull. So if you remember, our bus pull was canceled due to rain, so we want to bring it back. There was a lot of staff that were, you know, upset that we didn't have that event. So we are bringing it back that day. So it will be a nice day to spend time with staff, encourage everyone to participate. The other item, again, I want to draw your attention to is the United Way appeal region kickoff. This was something that we were very determined, we wanted to bring the region's kickoff to Brampton. So we will be hosting that kickoff on September 15th. Registration is available online through United Way's website so that you can register to participate. We are encouraging to have a large staff contingency there to show our support, to show that we are behind this corporate charity. And then finally, just, we have two days of caring, so we will be sending staff to the night's table to participate in the food bank and to help serve meals through the night's table agency. And again, our last, are mostly focused around bingo's. We're going to be offering up the Great Wolf Lodge and then we have some calendar draws and silent auctions in December. And finally, again, I'd like to thank council for your support, also to corporate leadership team. This campaign is only successful with, again, starting with yours apart and helping us out. So thank you very much.
Councillor Miles, did you want to say anything?
Thank you very much. Madam Mayor, I think the team is doing an amazing job and the one difference is that the focus this year is really helping those that are participating in giving to the United Way understand what it is that they're giving to. So participation with night's table and certainly the simulation, which I participated in, was very, very frustrating and the staff that were looking after the booths were really mean. And they would not give you an inch if you did not obey by every rule that was given to you. But it certainly was a learning experience and helped you to understand the barriers that people who are living in poverty have to go through. So they may have a job interview, but if they don't have the money to get there and they don't have anyone to look after their children and they don't have transportation, sometimes it's just impossible. So that's just a really simple taste of the kinds of experiences that we had at that event. So just want to recognize the fact that if we pull together as a municipality, we will certainly be able to make a difference, more of a difference in the lives of the people who, the vulnerable people that are living in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Thanks for your leadership. Our next item announcement is a 16.1, which was the item moved up by councillor Spobieri. Councillor Spobieri, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. As you recall, the last several months, we've been having a number of nasty emails from residents of Ward 9 attacking staff, our administration and council. And finally, I took matters, being a constituent of Ward 9, being a representative, I took action and responded. And my response has caused a lot of necessary turmoil, I believe, in our city and not only city, but right across, probably across this country. So having thought about the, my response and not anticipating that it would be going viral in the media and across the country, but having done so, I decided to make a statement this morning. And so this is my statement. "To the city of Brampton, my colleagues and my fellow Canadians, I wish to discuss my recent comments regarding values as reported in the media. I have, with the wisdom that comes with hindsight and somber reflection, realized that I owe an apology for a confusing email exchanged with a constituent. In my haste to defend my friends, colleagues, city employees and those hired to bring their expertise and skills to the city of Brampton to help a bigger and better city for the future of all our residents, I chose my words poorly. And my comments do not reflect my intended meaning when I wrote that email. My intention was to make a point about democratic values and freedoms, but in doing so, I committed the very same error that I was relying against, rallying against, excuse me, in categorizing people on the basis of color and giving recognition to only one color, it was improper. I want to make myself clear, very clear, on this point. When I referred to white values, I was referring to the Canadian values and was applauding Canada's commitment to build a nation of equity, peace, democracy and prosperity. I was addressing how fortunate we all are to live in a country that has adopted great values such as multiculturalism, diversity, freedom of religion and freedom of speech. Being Canadian is a source of great pride for me. In expressing that pride, I was not only, was not my intention to marginalize or ignore the contribution of people of all origins. My intention to highlight Canadian values of inclusiveness, democracy and freedom of, and freedom was lost as a result. In my haste to defend those under attack, I failed to include all those people for whom I have great respect, appreciation and admiration. In my zeal, I let my passion cloud my judgment and color my words. I understand that Canadian values, morals and ideals are not based on color and I recognize it was unfair to phrase my comments in that manner. This oversight was not a deliberate slight. I reached, I reacted too quickly and failed to appreciate how my words would be interpreted outside of the context in which they were written. Obviously, freedom, equity and the desire to live in peace and harmony for the prosperity of all are not white values per se. Obviously, it wasn't only white people that built this great nation, nor was it only white people that have fought to defend it. I realize that my words did not pay homage to all the people of all origins that have served our country at home and abroad, or the people of all origins who continue to safeguard our most important ideals. To all of those people, I'm forever indebted for my freedom and my liberties. I regret that I lost sight of my position as a public servant. In my duty to speak on behalf of my constituents, it behoves me to do better, to remember the privileges and responsibilities afforded to me as a member of council. It is my duty to reflect the values of the whole city and in fact, this whole nation. It was my duty to ensure my words acknowledged all people who helped build this great nation. In highlighting only certain contributions, as specific as it was to a particular line of communication, I neglected that duty and I apologize for that. I want to thank all the people who reached out with messages of support and understanding for the underlying message I was trying to convey. While my original comments were limited in their scope, I will forever appreciate the country that welcomed my family in 1956 and I was overwhelmed by the number of people who shared in that sense of gratitude. I hope that in issuing this apology, we can move forward and work towards, for the betterment of the citizens, of all citizens, to build a free, peaceful, democratic and prosperous city. Thank you very much."
Thank you, councillor. Our next item of business is possible delegation. Sorry? Oh, councillor Moore.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. And thank you very much, councillor Spobieri. I was aware that you were going to make a statement this morning. I wasn't aware of the details and I think that you have done an exceptional job of putting towards some clarification that was much needed. Because I was aware you were going to make something, a comment this morning, I did pull together. As I think it's important for everybody, both the media and for everybody in attendance today and who may watch the video of this council meeting, to really understand, I guess sort of the magnitude of the kinds of communications we perceive from this resident. This is since 2015, just this term of office. These are all individual emails that make disparaging comments about Anglo-Scottish, Polish, German, Muslims, our police department, our CAO, our commissioner of public works, our new commissioner of planning and unnamed staff in our public works department that this resident believes to be of Polish descent. The distribution list on these is rather robust. It includes the media, includes the mayor's office, some of her staff, selected members of council and members in our community. So these messages have been broadly distributed throughout our community, making the kinds of comments. The fact that it has taken two years before somebody responded to her and it took on a life of its own, and I thank councillor Spobieri very much for his comments this morning that put into context, but I think this really puts it into context. It was a matter of time. Why somebody on the distribution list hadn't taken action for the hateful comments that are in these emails long before now is really quite mind-boggling. I'm not included on the distribution list and I think that speaks volumes for the fact that those on the distribution list have forwarded and shared and so these messages have woven themselves into our community far and wide. So I brought these along this morning because I think it is important to provide the background and the context, not to in any way defend or justify councillor Spobieri's response and the words that he chose, but as a way to demonstrate that, you know, we should not sit back quietly while we become aware of someone in our community who's making the kinds of comments that tear our community apart instead of bringing it together. And I think your words councillor Spobieri have done an exceptional job to remind us all, both those of us in public life and those who call Brampton home and those who call the city of Brampton their employer, that we really live in an exceptional community and an exceptional country and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next item is item 6.1, this is possible delegations for the public regarding a proposed bylaw for a downtown A-frame signed pilot program. There is a related report on today's agenda identified as item 8.1 regarding the proposed bylaw for the pilot program. And before we begin here from any delegations, Mr. Darling, do you wish to provide a brief overview of the proposed pilot program?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I do. I just want to recognize the BIA and Susie Godfrey, the executive director, as well as our staff. They came to council on July the 5th with this request and we've talked about this for a number of years and I just want to commend both groups for putting this together over the last basically three or four weeks and, you know, to look at this pilot program and see how we can really support our businesses in the downtown. One addition I'd like to add under the recommendation report, I believe the clerks has it there, it's to add the, as we're using the display of wares as a guideline for this and we are on public lands, that the bylaw 157, 2017 be passed for the downtown Brampton A-frame signed pilot program as outlined in Appendix A to this report and the fee under the pilot program be $25 plus HST based on a fair market value rate in accordance with the display of wares and service bylaw 3018, 2012. So that's just the one addition for council's consideration. And as you see in point three, we'll be coming back after this and working closely with the BIA and looking at a potential permanent solution for this. Thank you.
Councillor Miles?
Thank you very much. I wanted to acknowledge and recognize staff for the fast turnaround time on this. I don't know who moved this motion.
Councillor Bowman and councillor Moore right now.
Okay, councillor Bowman and councillor Moore, I would like an amendment to the motion to remove the fee during the pilot program.
Councillor Moore?
Thank you. I guess I wasn't anticipating that. I didn't think that $25 for, is it a six-month pilot?
It's approximately five and a half months, yes. And just through the, through the mayor, the challenge you have is under the display of wares, there is a fee of approximately 54 cents a square foot to accommodate tables and chairs to come out. So this would, again, fit into that same sort of concept of three or four dollars a month coming to $25. So that's why we felt, and also we felt that with the businesses having to put some money into this, it does sort of put some emphasis on their responsibility. So that's what, and we did connect with the executive director of the BIA for approval. In other cities, charge significant more upwards of $75 to $125 for the same, for the same sort of service.
Actually, I, I'm comfortable with the $25. I do think that when people have some skin in the game, they have some responsibility and I think this is a nominal amount for the, for the six months. I too want to thank staff for acting swiftly on this. I think in many respects, it'll help to sort of highlight the need for improving or increasing the pedestrian capacity in the downtown. We, you know, it's hard to, you know, on one hand, we say we need the wider sidewalk so we can put the A-frames. Sometimes you have to put the A-frames there to demonstrate the need and so I think that, you know, this will help to do that. Where it's appropriate and feasible, we can put it in, but it will show the opportunities for the downtown for bringing advertising onto the street. Thank you.
Before I go to the rest of my speakers list, which seems to be growing, I'm going to go to Susie Godfrey. I understood you wanted to delegate on this, the executive director of downtown BIA. And anybody else who would like to speak to this and then we'll get to our speakers list?
Do I have to add her?
No, she's, she's as a break. Okay, welcome.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, Geoffrey and members of council. I'm here this morning just to say thank you to you all and to city staff for expediting this request that we brought forth on July the 5th. And we have been working very closely with city staff at the city of Brampton and we have reviewed the report and we are pleased with the recommendations put forth to council today. We are open or we're okay with the fee, just, you know, I had suggested a $75 fee back to Bob and Anthony. And so I think it's important, as councillor Moore had mentioned, to have some skin in the game for the business district. The BIA will be coming back to council post, likely back, coming back to you in December with recommendations for a long-term A-frame program for the downtown core. And we will be working with Bob and Anthony to work on communications to the business community to ensure that any issues that arise, that we can be proactive in helping the businesses get these A-frames and all the paperwork required. And in addition to this, I just wanted to say thank you for moving this, this item so quickly. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I'll go to my speakers list. Councillor Moore, you're still on the board. Do you want any?
I want, thank you.
Okay, councillor Bowman?
Thank you through you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Susie. I know that it's an important aspect of some type of marketing for the downtown businesses and I'm sure it'll pay well for them. And I was just, I was just going to comment on the fee. It's, it works out to five, five bucks a month basically for the trial period and we do have a bylaw, so I think it's, I think it is only fair that the $5 a month is applied fairly because we do have every other business in Brampton too that would, would want to partake in the same thing if we didn't have any fee at all. So thank you very much. Appreciate that and best of luck with it.
Councillor Miles?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had misinterpreted the intent of the $25. I didn't realize it was one fee over a six-month period. I was thinking it was a fee for every time an A-frame sign changed or what have you. So it's more than reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion moved by councillor Bowman, seconded by councillor Moore, that the delegation of Susie Godfrey regarding the proposed bylaw for downtown A-frame pilot program be received. All those in favor? That's carried. And that the, and moved by councillor Bowman, seconded by councillor Moore, this is item 8.1, that the report from Mr. Darling regarding the bylaw for downtown A-frame signed pilot program, this is the motion in front of you with the adjustment with regards to the fees under the pilot program, is included in this motion. All those in favor? That's carried. Our next item...
Is there anybody else who wants to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I'll go to my speakers list. Counselor Moore, you still on the board? Do you want any?
I want to, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Bowman.
Thank you through you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Susie. I know that it's an important aspect of some type of marketing for the downtown businesses, and I'm sure it'll pay well for them, and I was just, I was just going to comment on the fee. It's, it works out to five, five bucks a month, basically, for the trial period, and we do have a bylaw, so I think it's, I think it is only fair that the $5 a month is, is applied fairly, because we do have every other business in Brampton, too, that would, would want to partake in the same thing if we didn't have any fee at all. So thank you very much. Appreciate that, and best of luck with it.
Counselor Miles.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had misinterpreted the intent of the $25. I didn't realize it was one fee over a six-month period. I was thinking it was a fee for every time an A-frame sign changed or what have you, so it's more than reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion moved by Counselor Bowman, seconded by Counselor Moore, that the delegation of Susie Godfrey regarding the proposed bylaw for downtown A-frame pilot program be received. All those in favor? That's carried. And that the, and moved by Counselor Bowman, seconded by Counselor Moore, this is Item 8.1, that the report from Mr. Darling regarding the bylaw for downtown A-frame signed pilot program, this is the motion in front of you with the adjustment with regards to the fees under the pilot program, is included in this motion. All those in favor? That's carried. Our next item is 6.2, a presentation from Antonetta Minikilo, Office of the CEO, regarding the planning vision update. Welcome, Antonetta.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Mayor, councilors, corporate leadership team, and everyone in the council chambers today. My name is Antonetta Minikilo, and I'm the project manager for the Planning Vision. Now, you might be asking, Antonetta, you're not here to talk about saving buildings or reconstructing a barn? I know. I'm commonly known as an advocate for heritage preservation here at the city. However, my enthusiasm and drive is now shifted to championing a planning vision for all of Brampton. Over the next 10 months, we will be focused on creating a vision that looks at all aspects of city building and sustainability, and one that makes us the exemplar of rapidly urbanizing municipality in Canada. How lucky are we to live in a city and work for a city that has so much going for it? Just take a look at some of those statistics. Council, we heard you. We need a planning vision that leverages all of our attributes and facilitates holistic versus incremental planning, that is examining planning as part of a whole instead of on an application-by-application basis. It involves embracing our unique assets and applying a sustainable topology to the suburban experience. Now, as part of this project, there are four distinct streams of work. One are the planning vision documents, two is the engagement campaign, three, the regulatory framework, and fourth, the advocacy strategy. I'm going to take a moment to explain a little bit of each one. At a very high level, each stream of work has two overarching initiatives. The planning vision documents will lead to a Brampton 2040 report, which is the vision, and an urban design readiness report, which is a capacity review of our organization. Under the community engagement stream, it involves the creation of an engagement strategy and a robust public outreach campaign. The success of this vision, and much of Mr. Beasley's work across the world, is dependent on the breadth and depth of community engagement and the feedback that we receive from our community. The regulatory framework involves the creation of policies so that when the vision is complete, we have the tools for implementation and also the incentives to encourage strategic development in our city. Finally, the advocacy strategy creates awareness of our vision by other levels of government, the private sector, and may help to leverage funding for future projects. Achievements to date: We have one Metro Morning Interview, Brampton Board of Trade Speaking Event, staff visioning sessions, visits by Larry Beasley, development community roundtable sessions, 20 departmental summaries, 34 staff interviews, 700-plus groups and people identified on our web of influence. Now, as you can imagine, there are a lot of moving parts behind the scenes to ensure a positive outcome for this project. We are bringing everybody to the table to learn, grow, and ask questions, to make sure that we have a tomorrow that is more fulfilling for everyone in our community. Upcoming milestones: September will be a very busy month for all of us. We will be launching the engagement strategy. Mr. Beasley will be coming to Brampton, and his visit will include several events and working sessions, some of which include a Brampton Board of Trade Design Charette, a citywide tour for him and his team, as well as a workshop with you, council, on September 12th, so we look forward to that. To conclude, the project is progressing well, and there is a symphony of enthusiasm by Mr. Beasley, staff, and the community at large. The most exciting next step is going out to speak with our residents. Staff will be at go-stations, malls, community centers, farmers' markets, you name it, we hope to be there. We will be going out to meet our community where they are, and we will be engaging with them in very exciting, innovative, and creative ways, something very different than we've done before. After today, you will receive ongoing updates from me. The anticipated timing is monthly, but it may be more or less frequent depending on what's happening with the project. Finally, council, we have a call to action for you. You are our greatest link to our wonderful community. Please help us populate the web of influence. Now, you might be asking, what is that? It is a network of community groups and stakeholders who, with their network, can help us encourage participation in the planning vision and other engagement here at the city. It's posted by your offices in the sixth-floor interview room, and it'll be there till about August 11th, so we really encourage you to populate that and help us, because the more people we know who to reach out to, the more successful our engagement campaign will be. And also during meetings, conversations, a coffee or a chat with a resident, let them know about the planning vision. Encourage them to participate in our campaign. This is their time, and we need their voices. We will be sending you promotional materials and links to our new engagement platform where you can encourage residents to have their say. Needless to say, this is a very exciting time for our city, and I look forward to providing you future updates. Thank you.
Thank you, Antonetta. I don't have any speakers on my council. Dylan.
Thank you, Antonetta. Through you, Madam Chair, I just wanted to say thanks for the update. It's really exciting, and I'm really excited about the engagement part of it as well, because I think we're doing things a little bit different, really going out to the residents, and I think that's what we need, and you're going to have a lot of council input as well as to the key stakeholders, so I'm excited. So I just wanted to say thanks for all the hard work to everybody.
Wonderful, thank you. Counselor Bowman.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Just a very quick, I love the wording, project health as compared to an update. This is, this is wonderful, lets us know what's going on in the community, and I look forward to these updates. This is, this is fantastic, and it's fantastic news for Brampton. Thanks.
And thank you for the clarification. We were confused when you showed up.
I thought you might be, Madam Mayor. Counselor Miles.
Thank you. Again, I just, I want to recognize how quickly this has come together, because it's, it's less than a year that, at a council workshop, we identified the fact that we really needed to look at the overall plan of the municipality in order for us to realize the priorities that we had, had started moving on. So to see this plan come forward in probably seven months, excuse me, is pretty amazing, and I'd like to recognize our city manager for stopping and saying, yeah, we missed, we missed something, and, and pulling this back together. What I wanted to ask was in regards to all of the community engagement events, and I know that council has a separate workshop. Is there a role to play for members of council at each of the community engagement events?
Through you, Madam Mayor, thank you. That's a good question. I think we see council being foundational. The first role is to really help populate the web of influence, but we will, all of the events are actually quite organic. We might show up at recreation centers or farmers' markets, so certainly if you want to be a part of that or tell us which events are happening that are in your calendars that we could participate in, then that would be such a great help to us, to know where to be, and if you want to partake in any of our events, your presence is, of course, always welcome, and we're grateful for it.
Okay, well, that would be great, as long as we're given notification of meetings and whatnot, because though I think it's really important for, for council to have their workshop, it would be as equally important for us to sit with members of the community and hear what they have to say.
Yep. Through you, Madam Mayor, we'll share all the dates with you, and you can fit them into your calendars, so there will be those opportunities, but then there'll be less formal things, like being at a go station from 6:00 AM to 8:00 AM in the morning and trying to get the commuter rush, so we will let you know everywhere we'll be and where you feel it's appropriate. Again, we welcome your presence and...
Counselor Fortini is up at 5:00 in the morning.
Okay, so we want to see him at the go station with us.
He's the go train guy.
Okay, all right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I have a motion moved by Counselor Moore, seconded by Counselor Bowman, that the presentation be received. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Our next item is 6.3, a presentation from Michelle McCollum, Office of the CEO, regarding university update.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and members of council. Bob Segan will be joining me this morning. We'd like to provide the presentation jointly, and we're very pleased to provide you with an update on the very exciting initiative to bring a university and innovation hub here to Brampton. A reminder that our vision is to create a hub for education, innovation, and collaboration in partnership with Ryerson University, Sheridan College, and the province of Ontario. The programming will be based on STEAM, and it's an amazing opportunity to provide those collaborative opportunities for students, for businesses, and for our community to thrive. In terms of the work plan update, we have been engaged in a steering committee which contains members from Ryerson University, from Sheridan College, the province, and ourselves, and we've been receiving more information and learning more about what Ryerson and Sheridan are proposing to, to create in Brampton. The conversations have been excellent, they have been very exciting, and, you know, I'm confident that we are going to see something that unique, something that is going to really be an amazing experiential opportunity here in Brampton. So early fall, Ryerson will be looking to submit some more detailed information, so the outcome of those discussions with Sheridan, they will be submitting that more formally to the province, and then the province are looking to make an announcement about those details in the late fall of this year. We have hired an economic impact consultant, we completed the procurement, and pleased to let you know that urban metrics have been retained. They were the consultant that have done, they've done work for us on this before, and a higher-level impact study, and now they're going to be working closely with us on providing more detailed impacts of the specific proposal. We've also talked for some time about a potential municipal contribution into this initiative, and we think it's time to start discussing that and to start considering that. So Bob and I are working on a report that we will bring forward to you on September the 6th, so that will be a committee of council meeting on September the 6th. Bob?
Thank you, Michelle. So as you can see, members of council, Madam Mayor, keep, we're keeping discussions going on with Ryerson, Sheridan, and the province. The steering committee, as Michelle mentioned, has been very effective to date, and remember the meetings are set up, and we anticipate it will carry right through to the announcement, and probably beyond that as we work towards the implementation of that announcement. Subsequent meetings are being held with Sheridan and Ryerson about the innovation collaboration parts, how do we bring these extra pieces of the puzzle to the city and be effective and unique, something very different to attract new businesses and students to the city. The detailed economic impact analysis is already underway, and we've had some further meetings with the urban metrics, and will continue to do so, and as Michelle just mentioned, we plan to have a report to council for September 6th, which will outline some of the investment opportunities for the city and funding approval. Thank you.
You've done such a good job, I have no speakers. So I have a motion moved by Counselor Willen, seconded by Counselor Bowman, that the staff presentation be received. All those in favor? Thank you, Michelle. We really appreciate everything you've done, and we wish you well in your new career.
Thank you very much.
Our next item is Item 6.4, a presentation from Martin Bull, Sector Manager, Health and Life Sciences, Economic Development and Culture, regarding Bio 2017 Post-Mission Report. There's a related report on today's agenda identified as Item 8.4. We'll bring forward the staff report for consideration at this time. Welcome, Martin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. This is an update on the very exciting journey that we're on in terms of attracting jobs and investment in the very important health and life sciences sector. It's a very quick update on our mission to San Diego in the global conference that Madam Mayor Jeffrey, her EA, and myself attended earlier in June. First of all, let me thank and acknowledge all of council's support in this very important activity. It's helped put Brampton on the global map for biotechnology and life sciences investment. In addition, I thank and acknowledge, Madam Mayor, your attendance and your support. Many of the meetings that we had lined up would not have happened with your support, so once again, thank you all for your support. As you know, council supported the attendance and participation at this event. It's very important, because we are on a journey of not only global marketing, but also global investment attraction. While many of our activities related to marketing and investment attraction, we worked with our current industry partners such as Life Sciences Ontario and Toronto Health to generate at least six qualified leads in life science companies. These companies, including from California, from Japan, Mississauga, and Toronto, have all been contacted and are being followed up with in terms of their requests for information, contacts, and resources. In addition, sector and innovation cluster initiatives interested in working with us have also been contacted. For example, our visit with the Director of Economic Development in San Diego. Our work continues. We're on a journey. It's an exciting journey to attract jobs and investment, and we continue to work on very significant cluster activities. And just to remind everyone, in the second bullet point, this was a trade show that attracted over 16,000 global participants, and we're very pleased to be part of this, an opportunity to partner, an opportunity to visit exhibits, and to listen to some very engaging speakers. It's very important to point out that life sciences and biotechnology needs to be done in a very concerted effort of partnerships. And so what you see here is the Ontario Pavilion. This was an opportunity for us to meet and greet and have meetings that were unscheduled. It's very important that we continue this work in the future with our colleagues at the Ontario Government. We had over 18 opportunities to present, to meet with companies, and to market the key advantages of Ontario's life sciences sector, with partners around the world, with minister partners in Ontario. We had, for example, a Life Science Ontario Lead Generation Company in dinner. This is the company from Japan. We had one-on-one meetings with companies, Canadian Trade and Investment Consultants from Japan, India, and Israel, very important to the components of investment attraction here in Brampton. We had formal meetings with several global life science companies to market Brampton, and we also had an opportunity to learn from other life science clusters such as Laval, Edmonton, and Master University. So again, just a very quick shot of some of the events and some of the meetings taking place in the Canadian as well as the Ontario Pavilion. Some of the key results include two significant presentations that the mayor made to over 100 potential contacts, 12 new life sciences contracts to stay in touch, learn, and connect globally, including cities, trade consultants, finance, and legal firms. This is all part of our opportunity to build our network, to establish our contacts, and to follow up. And again, to emphasize, the follow-up has happened, and it will continue to happen. 18 meetings that have led, as I said, to promote Brampton ongoing. The most important part is that it's helping us build an understanding of how to promote and generate investment and leads in ongoing trade shows, including next year in Boston, Bio 2018. Just to give you an idea of the scale and scope, this hall probably took about 15 minutes to walk through, you know, hundreds of people, hundreds of people to connect with, and just to give you an idea of next steps, I've mentioned the follow-up. We continue to work with our partnerships in the life sciences sector, Life Sciences Ontario, which represents Ontario Industries, as well as Toronto Health, which represents academic institutions, to continue our work on this sector, very much linked to innovation as well as job creation. We continue to refine our messages and the advantages that we have in life sciences to not only companies in Brampton, as I make client calls and continue to meet and work with OZLR and other life science organizations. And we want to continue to work with these partnerships to build a stronger presence next year with your support, council and Madam Mayor, in Boston. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Bowman.
Thank you very much. Through you, Madam Mayor. Martin, thank you very much. It is very pleasing to see a report like this within such a short time of coming back from a, from a trade show, and, and I look at trade shows as much, much different than, than simple excursions to, to other places, to other countries, to other provinces. You guys on a, basically on a shoestring, when you, when you figured out that this was available to us, put together a fantastic plan. You planned meetings. Madam Mayor, thank you for tagging along and leading some of those meetings. We see the results right here, and I'm happy to say that, you know, results like this is what we fully expect when, when people go on out-of-town journeys. With that in mind, we do know that this is happening next year, and so I would like to, I would like to add a motion to, to the motion that's already there to accept the presentation, that authorization be provided for a prominent Brampton delegation to the Bio 2018 in Boston between June 8th, or 4th to 8th, and the Director of Economic Development and Culture undertake the necessary follow-up and preparations. I'd like to start that now. If we can do, or if we can do what we did with, with a month's notice, I'm sure if we start this now, we will be able to do far, far greater things in Boston next year, so I would really like to see that happen. This is a growing strength in Brampton. We've got good results here, and Martin, from all accounts, I've heard you're doing a fantastic job, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Counselor Moore.
Thank you very much. I agree with the amendment and starting the, the planning now for this trip. There was an article in the Toronto Star just... There was an article in the Toronto Star just last week where Oshawa is reinventing itself after recovery from the auto industry. And they were the health and life sciences. And so, to your point, Mr. CAO, about, you know, we have to be on our game all the time. And I think that, and I'm hoping this passes today, but we need to get the message out that we will be participating next year. Oshawa still in the GTA, but I think that Brampton has a lot to offer in terms of the investment with healthcare and life sciences across the Queen Street corridor. So, we need to get the message out there because they are doing it right now. If they can get an article in the Toronto Star with the mayor talking about the opportunities in that sector, we need to do the same thing here. So, build a communication piece around this intent to participate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Martin, imagine what we could do with more than three people. This is what we can do with three people. That's pretty good. So, I have a motion moved by Counselor Willens, seconded by Counselor Bowman, that the staff presentation be received. All in favor? Thank you. Let's carry. And that the report from Mr. Darling regarding the post-mission report be received and authorization be provided for the Brampton delegation to the Bio Boston between June 4th to 8th be approved and that the Director of Economic Development and Culture undertake the necessary follow-up and preparations. All in favor? Let's carry. Our next item is added item 6.5, delegation from Regan Hayward, Executive Director of Bozart Brampton, regarding the staff report 8.2 regarding Bozart Brampton, request for municipal support. And we'll bring forward the report right now for consideration. Welcome, Regan.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. I'm Regan Hayward, Executive Director of Bozart's Brampton. I'm here today to delegate on behalf of the Board of Directors for Bozart's Brampton and also the membership. So, I have a letter here from the board that I'd like to read and I also have a video message from the membership for council today. So, the letter reads, Dear City Staff and Councilors, the Board of Directors of Bozart's Brampton is encouraged by the elements of the report from Bob Darling, Director of Economic Development, regarding our request for municipal support. And it is encouraged at council's past and continued support of our organization. We should also mention that we're very thankful how swiftly it all came together. There are a few elements which the board wanted additional consideration toward. In order to take advantage of federal and provincial grants, Bozart's Brampton needs to change its operating model. Bozart's Brampton has been run as a visual arts cooperative whereby artists work on and pay to display their art. However, there's a new model of running artist-run centers whereby artists participate in visual arts projects and they are paid to create and exhibit their art. This is the model that Bozart's Brampton is working toward and transitioning to. Since Brampton is the ninth-largest city in Canada, the board looked at other artist-run centers in the top 10 cities to compare funding models. These artist-run centers have all three levels of government support and they operate on an average annual budget of $435,000 with up to 50% of their core funding provided by their municipal partner. Now, as we transition to this new model of paying artists, we will be ramping up our budget over the next three years, starting in 2018 with a budget of $150,000. That must include some core operational increases in 2018 to enable the building of organizational capacity as we transition to this new model. Therefore, the board has, would like a recommendation from council that city staff prepare a report that outlines other municipalities' support of their artist-run centers in a clear and concise way in time for budget considerations for 2018. So that Bozart's can secure a vital annual commitment from the city of Brampton for 2018 and beyond. Also, the board has asked that a due date be added to the recommendation number two that are at least be provided on or before September 30th. So, by having this due date, we can be very proactive in planning our vital next steps. Sincerely, Bozart's Brampton Board of Directors. Now, I have a video presentation. If I may, I can pop this in somewhere. And Chair?
Through you and Chair, I'll come over and assist, but Clerk's Office didn't receive a copy. Normally, we ask that you provide a copy before so we can make sure it'll work.
Okay.
I don't know how long it is.
It's two minutes maybe tops. It's very short.
Do you want me to draw?
Martin is important to me because it's important to so many.
It's an opportunity for artists like myself to make it known for my business and to grow. They give level-talent creatives like myself a place to showcase and develop their craft. They care about their members and they advocate for them as well as the people who come here and other creators who participate. It's given me a community of art and diversity where I can still engage with other creators, continue on learning my craft, and learn new techniques and ways to engage with Brampton and the art scene still.
Why is why me around the country to shoot videos for them or do photography for them? And wouldn't it be here would, would having access to a place like Bozart's get me started?
I can come in here and exercise my creativity, play, let my imagination play, and I can come in and collaborate with other artists and creators. We can share ideas, help each other's work, and gain more perspectives.
It's a creative breeding ground for ideas that can't find anywhere else in the city.
A place for people that just like art and they want entertainment. So, they come downtown for something to do, they go for something to eat, and where's a great place to see all the different events as well as the arts is Bozart's.
It's a platform where I can show my work, but it's also a space where I can engage other creators for people who appreciate our work.
Bozart's Brampton to me is kind of like a home away from home. Over here, I've gotten the opportunity to meet around people from different backgrounds that all come together in the love of art and the fun of real music. It's kind of like a oasis to me, you know?
Artist-run centers like Bozart's across the country are kind of the grassroots to help emerging artists. And as a born art emerging artist, it's great for me to be able to mix with young people and to talk to them about their ideas and to help them, help me make my art better.
Not just technical teaching of the art itself, but how to sort of manifest that creativity in the process of doing it.
Thank you. Thank you. So, just for clarification, you were speaking about the motion that, what changes was it that you recommended before we get into the debate here?
There was an additional recommendation.
An additional recommendation.
That's correct, for consideration, for council to consider.
And what was that?
That's request that city staff be directed to prepare a report that outlines other municipal supports for artist-run centers so that it's clear and prepared in time for budget considerations for 2018.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'd be happy to move the recommendation. In fact, I think I have either moved or seconded the recommendations in the report.
You haven't, you haven't, but you moved lots of other stuff today.
Okay. I want to thank staff for working closely with Bozart to pull this together, as you said, rather quickly. I think, you know, it certainly builds in the kind of accountability that, you know, when we're investing in any group in the city, it has those pieces so that we're able to properly evaluate. What I would like to do, rather than deal with the recommendations specifically, is ask that the letter from the Board of Directors be referred to staff for them to respond back. I don't know at this point how far down the road we are in terms of preparing the 2018 budget, how it fits into the new, the recommendations that, from the arts panel. So, I think it needs to be considered holistically, not pull out the recommendation which may or may not, or the question, how it may fit in with the vision that staff recommended to council. So, my suggestion is that we refer the letter from your Board of Directors to staff. And that way, they can deal with the recommendation, they can respond to a whole host of other matters that may be influencing that. So, I'll move that recommendation. And I just have a question for you. Who sits on your Board of Directors?
We have...
How many, how many boards?
Eight.
Eight board members.
Yes. Many of them are here today.
Are you stars of the show? Maybe you could provide Members of, provide us, just send us an email just so that we're aware.
Sure.
Of who that your Board of Directors are.
Thank you.
So, the recommendation be amended.
So, what I've done here is just put it in, that the delegation be received, and that the letter from the Board of Directors be referred to staff for response.
Yeah, thank you.
You did second that part? That was just received, though?
Okay.
But the motion at Sopis moved by Counselor Bowman and Counselor Willens. Counselor Bowman?
Thank you.
Thanks very much, through you, Madam Mayor. I was, I was going to suggest the same thing. Thank you, Counselor Moore. The other question is to staff, are we going to be able to squeeze this in before budget? I know that we start September for budget deliberations. So, are we going to be able to squeeze something like this in? Joe?
Through the Chair, that is correct. We can add it as part of the budget process for council consideration.
Okay, great. Long as we have time to do that. Bob, thank you very much. I imagine you got tired of seeing my face in your office talking about issues. So, I'm glad that this has been resolved. I'm glad to see that Bozart's will be continuing downtown for the next little while anyway. So, congratulations. And I think it's an indication that this council in Brampton does support our arts community. So, thank you very much.
So, I have a motion moved by Counselor Bowman, seconded by Counselor Moore, that the delegation video of Regan Hayward, Executive Director of Bozart, regarding municipal support be received, and the letter from the Board of Directors be referred to staff for response and consideration. All those in favor? Let's carry. And that the motion with the recommendations in item 8.2 be moved by Counselor Bowman, seconded by Counselor Willens. All those in favor? Let's carry. And just for those board members that are still here and the other representatives from Bozart, it's never too late to be part of our budget deliberations. So, we have three days of the budget deliberations. So, you can always be part of those conversations. They're open and they're public. Our next item is added item 6.6, delegation from Jag Deep Singh, representative of Gurdwara Guru Nanak Mission Center, regarding a staff report. We bring forward that item. Mr. Singh, if you'd like to.
Good morning, Counselor. Very much for the time and the opportunity here today. Since my topic is about diversity and the celebration of humanity, I'd like to start off by recognizing Counselor Spoberey's statement. Thank you so very much for that. In turbulent times, if I may use this analogy, if your statement was full steam ahead, Counselor Moore's remarks provided that compass because we can have all the power and all the steam we want, but without that perspective, we don't know which way we're headed. So, thank you very much for that as well. So, I'm here in regards to the exhibition that we proposed in over 10 days, the conservatory. And the, the last time I was here, it was recommended to the staff that a report be submitted. So, I had asked for a relief last time I was here from the charges and instead, what we got was a grant. So, a partial grant and which basically, by the way, which I'm very thankful for, but would leaves us with a situation the same where we're unable to proceed with that simply because I think the total charges were $5,700 and we got the community grant for $2,500, which, which I humbly submit is probably best used elsewhere because if we could get this use of the space for free, that is really what we're going for, just to be able to put forth what we have to display here. So, I'm not sure, I'm not very well-versed with how the city budgets operate, but I'm not sure if the rental income, so to speak, if I may call it that, from the conservatory is part of the city budget or what component of it is. But at the end of the day, that space, if it's available for use for community groups such as ours, I think it'll go miles to put forth a message of diversity in community building. So, if I, if I may humbly request and ask that perhaps, you know, one of you can support with a motion to allow the space to be used for free, that would tremendously help in making this possible. Thank you.
Okay. I have two speakers. Counselor Spoberey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much for your presentation and I really appreciate what you're doing and your intent. I have a question to staff before I make my recommendation. Is there any cost to the city involved in allowing this space to be used as a, to showpiece the material this group has? Is there a cost to the city?
I'll take the first part through the Chair. The, the challenge we have with display, as you know, in the atrium right now, we have an area that we do have public art in. And that was one of the components in the last report with Bozart's, is they'll be a partner with us determining what type of artwork and also PAMA will be, what type of artwork we want to see in our atrium and our conservatory. The biggest challenge with this particular report is the length of time being 10 days. And one of the thoughts is if we, the gentleman, Mr. Singh, would reduce it down to one or two days, we could do this. The biggest challenge with public art is insurance because the applicant would be responsible for insurance. And that area is not really secure, the conservatory. So, it would be one of our biggest challenges in dealing with him. But we do have also a municipal gallery program as well that all work has to be vetted through. But to your question, I would suggest that we do have the atrium right now, that we do have public art, and we've offered that to him as a component. And he's looking for a bigger project.
So, through the Chair, this space in the atrium, is it continually being used all the time year-round?
Yes, we have a public art program and since now we're having culture into our portfolio, we have staff that is responsible for this in partnership with this last report with Bozart's, yes.
And how long is each display allowed to be shown?
A minimum of, I would say, a month. It could be potentially two months or three months, potentially, yes. Depending, we will work with each applicant depending on their needs and...
So, the work that this group is trying to display, it doesn't meet the criteria that the city has set with Bozart?
No, absolutely. We offered that to Mr. Singh and he's looking for a bigger area to show his work. So, we offered the atrium as an opportunity, as a, as a first step. But he is, as I said earlier, is looking for a bigger area.
So, which area is he asking for?
He's looking for a conservatory in one of our boardrooms, I believe, upstairs in West Tower. So, the conservatory which goes out onto Queen Street.
Okay. So, again, Mr. Singh, the, would you not say that the atrium would be a place where the work would be very, very visible to, to a lot of people rather than put it into a conservatory area?
So, I'll answer that. So, what we've done in the past with the same exhibit is we've displayed it... So what we've done in the past with the same exhibit is we've displayed it in the Metro Hall Rotunda, and the City Hall, Toronto, the City Hall Rotunda, and the Great Hall in Mississauga Civic Centre. So those are large spaces. The atrium provides for, I believe, ten display panels, where you can hang those ten display panels. My intention to use either ten or part of the ten were to basically provide directional signage to say, or introductory signage to show that the, that the, the real exhibit is in the conservatory. As for the boardroom is, the boardroom, we've specified, actually was mentioned during discussions, that it's not used in the evening hours, from like six to nine. So that's all we're asking for. That was more so to encourage discussions and seminars and things like that. It's not critical to the exhibition as such, but the boardroom, one boardroom, we were utilizing it only during off-hours when it would sit vacant. That was one. In regards to the overall time usage, I believe the, the dates are thirtieth, thirty-first, first and second. Third, fourth are significant faith days in Brampton, so we'll leave those out. And then we've got sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, we're leaving off for Remembrance Day, and then the twelfth being the closing for the, for the event, which is again, the conservatory. So that's the spread out, sort of the dates of it, but overall, that's how it's played out.
What about the insurance aspect? Is there a concern about the insurance?
Yeah, we've, we've provided insurance in the past, so that's not a problem. We could provide insurance for, for whatever the city is. I think it's $2 million, CGL commercial general liability, so we'll do that.
So you're looking to do your display in the, the new atrium, the new part of the City Hall, in the West Tower?
The conservatory portion, yes.
For one month?
No, for, for ten days.
Ten days?
For ten days.
Okay. So, so through staff, is that area being used for art display, or is it the City Hall atrium that's being used for art display?
Presently, we use City Hall atrium for art display. So, but there is obviously an opportunity, as we go forward, to use this area in conservatory. We would look at it, probably recommend sort of a one-night event. The challenge is, is that area has an exit onto Queen Street, and we are concerned about security, but there is opportunities there.
Okay. Well, I hear that the insurance, they have insurance coverage, and so, you know, I don't see, since it's not being used presently, I don't see, the, Mississauga and Toronto have provided some very large spaces, so I don't see a problem less doing the same. So, Madam Mayor, I'd like to move that we waive any, any fees whatsoever, and the conservatory be made available for their display. Okay? Thank you.
I think what I need to do is, have you amended the motion? Okay. I'll go to my speakers. Counsel Dillon.
Oh, I just had a, some of my questions were already asked by, or you had already answered, which was, what are the municipalities that have provided, the, who waived the fee as well? So you, oh, yeah. So who, who provided the space with the waived fee? So I think you mentioned Metro Hall, City Hall in Toronto, and Mississauga as well. And just to, I guess for the information of everybody as well, I've had an opportunity to go to City Hall as well, last year, for, for Toronto City Hall, to see the exhibit as well. So that was very informative as well. And the feeling that I got was that, you know, a lot of the times when I do go to City Hall in Toronto, is that people feel like it's ours, for whatever exhibit that they do want to put on, and that people have a sense of ownership, that this is our City Hall, this is our city as well, and, you know, whether we have something that we want to talk about, if there's an issue that we want to, you know, get out there, you know, that opportunity is there. So that's the feeling that I got, and, but, you know, I did have an opportunity to see the exhibit, I thought it was very informative as well, and so, question, I don't have any more questions, they were all answered, so I just want to say that I do support the motion by Counsel Spoberey to waive the remaining fees.
So I could clarify on that as well. By the way, thanks to all the staff, I mean, they've done a tremendous job to moving this thus far. With Toronto City Hall, which was the most recent one, what they'd done was, they allowed the rotunda, and then they allowed, on the closing day, they, they provided the stage and the chairs to actually set up a sort of a presentation by a professor from University of Carlton, and a professor from university, Dr. Situl Singh from University of Buffalo. We had Associate Dean from the University of Carlton, and a couple more politicians who actually flew in specifically for that event. Now, what they also did was, a lot, in addition to, I guess I'm trying to recognize them here, maybe, but, but in addition to providing the rotunda, they also provided the outside, the Nathan Phillips Square portion, to park a van. There's a community group, actually, Seva, Six Seva Society, they have a food van, which is sort of a self-enclosed kitchen in a van. So what they do is they take it to Queen Street, or any other place where there'd be people in need for food, whether, you know, it's a homeless situation, or whatever the case may be, and provide free food over weekends and things like that. So they brought their van, and they were allowed to park on the Nathan Phillips Square itself, and they were basically just, you know, giving away food that they were cooking right there at the location. So, you know, they've accommodated us in more than just the rotunda inside space, but also giving out the outside spaces as well.
Are you finished? Okay, I have two more speakers. Counsel Moore.
Just for clarification, so Toronto and Mississauga waived the fees?
That's correct.
Okay. You've asked, answered my question around the insurance. I think there is a legitimate concern around security. I mean, insurance is one thing, hoping to never have to use that insurance is another. So with the access onto Queen Street from the conservatory, I can understand why staff have a concern. My question is this, well, actually, I have two points to make. This is the kind of scenario we find ourselves in when we don't have a policy around the use of the rotunda, and I think you've sort of helped us to shine the spotlight on that, that we can't sort of make up rules and, and guidelines as we go along. So I think staff need to take under consideration the fact that if, if the conservatory is a space that can be used, what's some criteria? Is it, is it a two-day exhibit? Is it a three? Is it, is it a week or a month? You know, and what are the, you know, various costs? So people understand when they come to City Hall, and they want to do a display or an exhibit, you know, exactly what they're dealing with on it. But the, the other comment I have is more around PAMA. And when we talk about a ten-day exhibit, and some of the kind of activities around that exhibit that you've, you've spoken about, it seems to me that PAMA, as Brampton, well, its peels, art gallery and museum, might be a more appropriate venue for it. People would more expect to see that kind of exhibit, participate in the kinds of workshops and, and speaking engagements that, that you've shared with us. Have you approached PAMA to talk about it? I, you know, it's right across from City Hall, we'd like to use our parking, but really-
So I'll, I'll address both those points.
Yeah.
For a security concern and insurance policy, we've taken direction from the staff and security alike on the day of the setup. So for example, in Mississauga Civic Centre, I distinctly remember in the Great Hall, they wanted to not place, wanted us not to place panels in a certain portion because of the camera line of sight, and security, and access, and all of that. So that's sort of the day off, we take direction for that to, you know, hopefully never have to use the insurance component of it. So that's, that's that. In terms of P-Large Museum and Archives versus City Hall, I mean, if I may sort of refer back to Counsel Hillen's comment, the, the general consensus in the community is that this venue has more star power. So, you know, I don't know if that's the right phrase, but people, when, when we say council or Brampton City Hall, it's like, oh, Brampton City Hall, let's go there, right? Not, not saying that PAMA is not, but I think that's more permanent displays, more like five, six months long. I've spoken with Marty Branch, he's the manager there, know her very well, very good friend of mine, but we discussed, and probably more of a permanent nature is what they cater for, you know, two, three months and things like that. This is more community awareness, engagement, informational kind of thing.
No, you've answered my question, and, you know, it is a valid point. I was probably one of the more vocal counselors during previous terms, that, you know, City Hall had become an unwelcoming place for citizens. You know, even things like holding public meetings off-site, holding inaugurations off-site, I felt that City Hall was a more appropriate place to-
Sense of belonging.
-conduct City Hall business. And so, you know, welcoming our citizens into City Hall, that it's not the place where you just come to pay a fine.
Or taxes.
Or your taxes. You know, that it, that it is a place that should represent, you know, what our community is about. Thank you.
Counsel Miles. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'm having a, a problem with this, because every single council meeting, we have individuals standing in front of us, asking for relief of fees. And at the last council meeting, it was for a seniors' information fair at Ching Park, and I believe sports groups, sports, I mean, every meeting now, we have individuals in front of us asking for relief of fees. And this council has consistently, I believe, said, we have to stick to the protocol that we have, because if we don't, we will not be able to, it, it's, it's just going to grow and expand. So I would have supported the seniors' fair, I would have supported a lot of the events, but council has consistently said, we have a policy, it's, it's a grants policy, to deal with these organizations, there is a $2,500 amount that can go to offset costs. And I, I just think that we have a, if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do this, we need to change the policy, otherwise, we are saying yes to one and no to another. And I think it would be lovely, I think it'd be amazing to have the display here. But I also support the, many other groups and organizations that have come to us, and we've consistently said no. So where, where does, I mean, council has to, you have to, we have to draw the line, and I think we have to be fair to all, and be consistent to all. So staff goes away, does an evaluation, does their very best to try and keep within the policy that council has adopted, and come back, and they say to us, for consistency's sake, for all of these different reasons, this is what we're recommending. And we have, as a council, have listened. So that's why I have, have a concern with this. No, not every request is identical, but at the end of the day, it's always about asking us to waive the fees and the costs. If, how much, how many days would the $2,500 allow for this festival, or for, it's not a festival, for this exhibition to actually take place in the city?
Rough math, the $5,700 is ten, so about four days, I would say.
So you would have, you could do this over a four-day period? It could be maximized for the greatest exposure, and we could assist with promotions, I'm assuming, of the event. And we could still keep within the corporate policy. I know you've said give the money to someone else, but I think that council has recognized, and our staff, the value of, of your request. The problem is, is the length of time, and the, the request to waive fees. So I, you know, if council determines to do this, I think we have to do it. We can't, we can't do these as one-offs, and I don't know how we're going to deal with this in the past, because it's getting to the point where every council meeting, we're spending more time debating what we're going to waive fees on for requests than we are dealing with the business of the city, and that's what our community grant program was set up to do. So if you want to take it back, take it back, but if you don't, I think we need to, staff have said they're reviewing the policy, they're going to come back, but we do have to, we have to, we have to, we don't have to be seen as being fair and equitable to all, we have to be fair and equitable to all. So I don't see how we start saying yes to one and no to others. Thank you.
Counsel Willens.
Yeah, thank you too, Madam Mayor. I agree with Counsel Miles. I support the staff's recommendation, but also, have you approached the, maybe you are involved, I don't know, but we just had an event with the Sikh Heritage Month, because they're here for like a whole month, and I'm sure that this could probably, moving forward, this could probably be worked in with that group. Have you approached them, or are you part of that group at all?
I am. I've been involved with them off and on, but this is something that has inherently stayed separate from Sikh Heritage Month.
Okay, so it's-
Yeah, because Sikh Heritage Month is more about Sikh heritage, and this is more general community building and what have you. It's a more generalized message, not saying that one's independent of the other, and so that's where that is.
Could you see, is something like this working in Sikh Heritage Month or not?
We could, we could explore that in the coming years, but, you know, traditionally, we've done this once a year at, you know-
Okay.
...locations, like City Hall.
Thank you.
Counsel Spoberey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I certainly understand Counsel Miles, where, you know, your concern. I believe that, you know, and I believe in maintaining city policies and staff recommendations, generally speaking, although there are some circumstances where the exceptions could be made. In this particular situation, the Guru Nanak Mission was, was putting on this, they, they're well-known, they're well-known for doing things on a voluntary basis and charging. For instance, they open the doors to, every day, to people who go in and have a meal when they're hungry, no charge. And, and it's not that this is a money-making exercise, this display. The group is coming here, trying to promote the, this event, and there's no cost to the city, which I think is a very important part of this whole discussion. But there is no cost to the city by having the display in this. I know that, generally speaking, we charge for these spaces for people to rent, but in, in a lot of cases, these groups are for-profit groups, this is a nonprofit group. It's not that they, they would have to take the money from donations that people give, if they had to pay the bill, that people give to the temple. And so I, I believe that in this particular situation, and Toronto, I'm sure Toronto and Mississauga have also policies of, that you pay for the space, and they saw fit to provide the space with no charge. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. So they, they have a policy, a very robust one, just as the city in Brampton does, and their whole criteria of assessing this, the nature of the display and all of that, and of course, the associated fees, which they have waived in the past.
And I, and I, so question to staff, do we charge Boz Arts for doing their display in our atrium?
Just to be clear, on this 14.1.1, I think is, is the grant program, and we would probably, if he had come in during the, the grant period and applied, he would have got his proper, you know, concessions on, on waiving of the fees. It's the challenge that you've had, and you've seen probably every council meeting, is that when groups come forward outside of the grant period, which is already closed, and ask for funding. And to Counsel Miles' point is that you've, it's 100% have turned down these, because there will be many more that will come back now, suggesting that you, you now opened a new door here. So the recommendation is that, and this is because it's outside the grant period, we are looking at a new grant formation of having- we are looking at a new grant formation of having maybe one or two or three windows that these types of requests can come forward in the future. We're under review of that right now. We're hopefully coming to a report coming in the end of this year with this. But the challenge with being outside of the grant period, and staff only has authorization of this $2,500, I would suggest that you will now open a door that all of the ones that we've turned down will come back, including Lacrosse, who was just here. So, that's why this policy, and that's why staff has written this policy and stuck to this report. So, as Director of Culture, I 100% support this type of work and we will look at that in the new formation of the grant program. But that's why we're sort of bound by these guidelines today.
Well, thank you for that. So, the Bozarts actually gets a grant to display their work here at the atrium?
Bozarts did not get a grant this year to... They didn't come through for a grant. Bozarts will be a partner with us in looking at types of artwork that will be going into the atrium potentially in the future. And there is no charge to that. So, if you do come into the atrium, there is no charge. But they're not... Bozarts isn't... It's not the same sort of situation. Any group that comes in and applies and goes through our program potentially can put their work up, just like Mr. Singh's work.
Yeah. Well, thank you for that. And, you know, Madam Mayor and council, I don't have a problem with other groups coming forward if they're... Until we revise our policy and if it's something reasonable, I have no problem supporting it, especially if there's no cost to taxpayers, which in this case, there's not. So, any other group, whether I stay here till 2:00 or 3:00 or 4:00 to discuss these matters, to me, I'm prepared to do that. So, I still submit the motion to waive the fees. And if other people come forward that there's no cost to the city, I'd be happy to support that too in the future, if other groups come forward. Thank you.
Okay. I have no more speakers. Motion moved by Council Williams. Council Bowman, that the delegation of Jagdeep Singh, Representative Gruenannic Mission Centre, to council meeting request for sponsorship, City Hall Conservatory be received. All those in favor? Let's carry. And the motion moved by Council Spohary, seconded by Council Dillon, that the report from Bob Darling, Director of Economic Development and Culture, dated June 30th, re-update on request for waive of fees for exhibition-style presentation at City Hall be received, and that the fees associated with the proposed presentation for the rental of the space in City Hall in the amount of $5,742 be waived. All those in favor? It's lost. Okay. I have the one on the back. So, I have a motion moved by Council Moore, seconded by Council Williams, that the report from Mr. Darling be received. All those in favor? So, the next item is...
Madam Mayor, can I just clarify?
Sure.
On that, pass this through.
Yep.
If a group decides to hold the event over a five-day period instead of 10-day period, does that mean that there will be no fees applied?
Through the mayor, we'd be happy to look at this for sure and see if we can make this work for Mr. Singh. Absolutely.
I would suggest that Singh work with staff, look at a five-day show for then next year, we'll do a bigger one.
I know.
Yeah, just work with staff, work it out. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Our next item is item 8.3. It's a staff report regarding programming opportunities for Garden Square to leverage the city's technological and entertainment venue investment in the square and showcase the city of Brampton. Do any members have any questions? Council Williams.
Yeah. Just quickly through you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Bob, for the report. Just maybe you might want to include, if there's going to be media releases going out there about this, Sean Monahan plays for Calgary, he's from Brampton. He was the first-round draft pick and sixth overall, so it'd be pretty important to have if he's playing on that same day as Ricky Ash. So, I'm sure there's just to miss that part. Thank you.
Council Miles.
Can you determine what is chosen to go into the square and what's not?
Through the mayor, we are in the process of looking at a number of things. One is our, obviously, our grant program, complete review. I was here beginning of the year talking about making sure that we only had the quality events that we wanted to see in the square. It's our centrist to look at great events. So, we're putting together a sort of a plan for the square and to identify, much like we did with Gage Park, to identify what Gage Park is. So, we will be coming back to council with that, with those recommendations. And it's something that will be tied directly to our grant program, but also, we'll be talking to our stakeholders as well because we're finding that there's a tremendous amount of interest in it. There's a tremendous amount of overuse in it. It is taking a bit of a challenge with the number of food that's being set up with grease on it and so forth. So, we're sort of assessing it now that we have the screen, now that we have our new artistic director, we now have our senior manager of cultural services. So, I would suggest that we're sort of monitoring and suggesting what we want to see there and how many times we want to see significant events there is another thing. So, it's a bit of a challenge because a lot of people want to see this and many of them have events that are 2,000 or 3,000 or 4,000 people and they just don't accommodate there. And so, it is a bit of a challenge for us, but it's something that we're undertaking as we speak.
Thank you very much. Part of the reason why I ask is I walked downtown with my grandchildren last night and I was really pleased to hear some country music going on and the square was full of people learning how to line dance. And I thought it was amazing, but the one thing that made me really happy was that I saw residents from the east side of the city there. So, it was something that was attracting people, not just the downtown wanderers, but it was attracting people from around the city. And everybody was having so much fun. So, you know, I love that kind of the neighborhood, the... Some of the folksy stuff that I'm starting to see happen in the square. And so, I don't want to see it over-programmed, if you know what I mean, but I think that kind of thing is kind of nice if, you know, once a week or what have you, we have those kind of events in the square. Because the square was packed and it was packed with people who had come downtown for that specific thing, to just listen to some country and learn how to line dance. So, yeah. And kudos to your staff.
And if I could add to...
Your staff are amazing.
If I could add, and thank you very much, Council Miles. We are very fortunate. We have tremendous staff in our cultural services department and our Garden Square staff that put this on. Last night was recognizing the province of Alberta. Each Tuesday night, we recognize another province in Canada. And it was a very successful night in working with a number of different partners. But I do agree with you, our staff. And each night of the week, tonight, we recognize startup entertainers or Monday night, we do some YouTube stuff. Our Thursday nights are movie nights. Our Friday nights is an amazing concert series. And on Saturday nights, we have a doubleheader concert series and on Sundays, we have Blue Jays. The challenge we have is that we are taking up almost six or seven days of the programming of the theater and... Oh, sorry, of the square. And, you know, when does the opportunity to put other festivals in and what type of festivals? And is this the right venue for these festivals? So, that's the challenge. But our staff has done a tremendous job just looking at the square and also putting together... It's always programmed, there's always something happening. And again, we're looking at developing even stronger with our cultural services division.
Yeah, well, I'd just like to remind you that their Chingakoozie Park is there. The new convertible skate water is also a venue for events. So, as the demand grows, I would love to see some of these things, you know, being utilized in both sides of the city. I think that we've created that venue and let's see it start to be utilized as well. Okay? Thank you. And just, I did want to recognize staff for doing a great job in the square.
Thank you, Council Miles. Council Bowman.
Thank you through you, Madam Mayor. Am I... Maybe I'm the only one that doesn't recognize what this actually is telling us here, 8.3.1. We got hometown hockey, is that correct?
Yeah.
That is huge. I mean, that is nationwide. That goes across Canada. Brampton will be on Hockey Night in Canada as hometown hockey. And I would suggest that Ching Park be filled with young hockey players skating around, not shooting pucks and stuff, but because they do on-location shoots at all various things. I think this is fantastic for Brampton, the exposure that this city is going to get. Ron McLean, is he going to be here, Bob?
Through the chair, yeah, Ron McLean will be here.
Don Cherry?
I'm not sure about Don Cherry, but Ron McLean will be here.
But, I mean, come on, Ron McLean in downtown Brampton, talking about Brampton being hometown hockey. This is fabulous. I mean, this is... I don't want this to get lost. This is a great news story and Brampton should be very proud that we've got this. So, thank you very much for the work you've done. Thank you.
Okay. Any other speakers? I have... Councilmore has moved this, seconded by Council Bowman. All those in favor? I think that's carried. Almost at all arms up there. Okay. Good enough. 8.6, this item was considered as part of the consent motion. 8.7, this is a staff report regarding Bill 139, Building Better Communities and Conserving Watersheds, Act 2017, proposed reforms to the Ontario Municipal Board Act and the Planning Act. Do any members have questions or comments on the staff report? Seeing none, I have a motion moved by Council Williams, seconded by Councilmore to move receipt and that the staff be directed to forward to the province the report as a city's submission on Bill 139. All those in favor? Our next item is 8.8, a staff report regarding the request to exempt the northeast corner of the CN Railway Lands approximately 350 meters south of Wanless Drive and east of Winston-Churchill Boulevard from the interim control bylaw in Ward 6. Do any members have questions or comments on the staff report? Seeing none, I have a motion moved by Council Williams, seconded by Councilmore, that the report be received and the bylaw be passed. All those in favor? 8.9 was consent. 8.10, 11, 12 were all part of the consent agenda. 8.13 was consent. 14, 15, 16 were all part of consent agenda, as was 18.7. 18.18, this is a staff report regarding the Clean Water and Wastewater Fund, 2017, update on the city of Brampton's application for stormwater management and infrastructure. Do you have any members who have questions on this item? It's moved by Council Williams, seconded by Councilmore. All those in favor? I don't have enough hands. All those in favor? Okay. In favor? It's carried. Am I moving too fast for you, council? 18.19 was put into consent, as was 8.20, right through to 8.23. We're now at the item 10. The committee reports are minutes. We have one set of minutes. Under council's meeting procedures, committee or section chair introduces their committee report in minutes and summarizes the matters considered that are now being brought forward to council today for ratification and those of the Heritage Board minutes, which were reporting consent. So, item 12.1 was extracted by Council Bowman. This is the Ombudsman Report, annual report of 2016-17, and you had some questions.
Yes, thank you through you, Madam Mayor. I'm just wondering, to be honest, I didn't have a lot of time. I don't think anybody did go through the entire report. I read through it and I've got questions, which I'm wondering if it's not better... We've got provincial representation and I'm just wondering if it's possible at some point to get our provincial reps in here because there are a number of things... We had almost 300 cases, according to the list here, that were sent to the ombudsman. And I know they're provincial issues, but I think it's important to the city of Brampton that we understand or that we get a handle on what our residents are complaining to the province about. It is still a municipality. We do represent the municipality. And there's no details on what these 300 complaints were about. So, I'd like to know if there's any way that we can get more information about the city's complaints in general. What categories did they fall under? How were they handled? Who handled them? Things like that.
Through you, Mayor Jeffrey. We can write to the ombudsman to request that kind of typology information. We won't be able to access specific information because of confidentiality in terms of complaints or requests that go into the ombudsman's office, but we can request that both for any of the writings within the city as well as the municipal issues and complaints or requests that were filed.
Good. I think it would be very helpful to council to have that information. Thank you.
So, you want to move the motion? The receipt and that the clerks department will look for additional information.
Please.
Council Fortini, you want to second that? All those in favor? Oh, Councilmore, did you want to ask another question before we vote?
I was going to second the motion, but you found a second or so, that's good. There were on 12.1-74, actually, 26. It talks about the number of cases received about municipalities because it would be interesting, particularly for our staff, to understand if there's any trends or common themes on those complaints about municipalities that we could be addressing so that next year, you know, we had 26, Mississauga had 59, you know, just looking at Peel municipalities. But I think that even Caladan had 13. If there's some common themes that we could be fixing, then we should be doing it. But if we don't know what the nature of the complaints or inquiries are of the ombudsman's office, we can't take any action. So, I think that it's really wise of us to sort of do a little bit more probing on this report that's here. I have to believe that it wasn't produced just so that we could put it on a shelf somewhere or add it on to an agenda, but there might be some useful opportunities for us. Thank you.
Council Miles.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, Madam Mayor, if there is anywhere within the ombudsman's responsibilities and reporting to the province, governance comes into it and equitable governance for the city of Brampton. I don't know if there is a... I mean, in his messages, he talks about promoting accountability and certainly, the province of Ontario have not been accountable when it looks at representation, fair representation for the city of Brampton. So, I just... I raise that.
You'll get your chance, Council Miles.
I raise...
You'll get your chance.
Listen, I've had my chance and it hasn't done me too much.
You have another chance. And that's coming up in our agenda, so we'll be able to talk about it.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So, I have a motion moved by Council Bowman, seconded by Council Fortini, that the ombudsman report be received and a request through the clerks department for additional detail regarding complaints and trends. All those in favor? Let's carry. Our next item is 12.2, correspondence from Frankdale Regional Chair, Region Appeal, the Ninth Line Lands Regional Official Plan Amendment, request to hold a statutory public meeting. It was on consent. There's so much on consent, I can barely keep up with this agenda. Our next item, wait for it, is government relations matters. So, matters have been distributed to members by the CEO's office. Loel Ruben Vaughn, Mayor Office of the CEO, is here to provide a brief presentation in regards to the city's participation in the upcoming AMO conference starting this weekend. Welcome, Loel. And I believe you've passed on a lot of the documents.
[inaudible]
I forgot. I'll come back to it. Sorry. I'll come back to you. Go ahead.
Everybody's as excited as I am about the upcoming AMO. I'm sure you're probably excited about me transferring emails for me to getting you to do some of the speaking over the next couple of days. This morning, I was able to meet with everybody to provide you with additional information, which is all the binders. This includes everything. So, thank you very much for all your patience and for your encouragement to continue to send you emails even though on late... This morning, I was able to meet with everybody to provide you with additional information, which is all the binders. This includes everything. So, thank you very much for all your patience and for your encouragement to continue to send you emails, even though on late on a holiday Monday, you still accepted a lot of those meeting invites. What I want to do over the next couple of minutes is just use this time, because this is the last time we're going to be together prior to the start of the conference, just kind of go over some of the logistical issues that kind of sometimes come up. I know some of you have been here before, but so this is more for first-time councillors, so I'm here to just answer any questions either today or leading up to the conference. I don't know, can everybody's? So, the first slide really is just the update on the conference milestones. We're really pretty much right on target, so this is the second of two council quote-unquote workshops, just to prepare you for the conference and leading up to the conference. On Sunday, we're going to have a delegation team huddle in Ottawa, and then following this, we're going to have a conference report follow-up. The conference delegation meetings, you know, we were pretty successful, so that's why the binders are fairly thick. We have confirmed seven meetings, including the opposition leaders. The Ministry of Finance, what he ended up doing was actually transferring his issues that we suggested to the Minister of Municipal Affairs. So, we are meeting with the parliamentary assistants. So, we are going to be able to at least raise the financial issues as it relates to the secondary units right-of-entry with the parliamentary assistant. The meetings are 15 minutes in length. The NDP has showed a little bit more mercy and given us 25 minutes in the package. And today, we'll kind of talk through who are the primary speakers, who are the secondary speakers. We provided suggested speaking notes. They're just to really help prompt you. We've asked some questions, some thank-yous in particular areas, but really, we leave it up to you, because you've been dealing with these issues for quite some time. So, they're just there to kind of prompt you, so please feel free to take them and make them your own, so it's a little bit more natural. It's not just a bullet point on a page. Just to be clear, all councillors who are participating at the conference are invited to participate. We understand that some of you do have regional obligations as well. So, you know, I have been trying to coordinate offline, just to ensure that you're placed at the appropriate spot when you need to be there. And then also, for some, if you don't want to attend the delegation meetings, and that could be because you want to participate in some conference, either plenary sessions or concurrent sessions that go on throughout the conference. So, preparing for the conference, the binder provides you with a lot of logistical stuff. It provides you with a specific calendar for delegation. It overlays our meetings. It overlays the region's meetings, as well as the keynote addresses. We provide maps, meeting room locations, proposed speakers. I also just wanted to highlight the on-AMO app. It's actually pretty neat. So, AMO developed an app for the conference. So, if you are technologically inclined, you can download it. You can look at it. It has more up-to-the-minute conference information, so sometimes things change if a speaker cancels or is shifted to a different time slot. And the other neat thing is you can actually incorporate it with your calendar, so then you can have it pop up every 15 minutes prior to a session, so that gives you enough time. So, just thought that I would throw that out there. This information is also, is in your binders. For every meeting that we have, we've included biographies, briefing notes, and again, those proposed speaking notes. And if you look at those three pictures, we actually have pretty cool and new brochures on Riverwalk, Regional Connections, as well as the university. So, some of the briefing notes have a lot of bullets, but I think that these brochures really provide, give some life to it, so some maps, some stats, some figures, so it's not just you talking. They can actually see and they can start to feel it. This is just a little bit more information on the Ontario AMO app, and provides you an outline of what you can actually do with it. The main venue, beginning on Sunday and probably up until Tuesday, you're going to be spending a lot of time in the Shaw Centre in Ottawa. Everything, most of the keynote speakers and the plenary sessions are going to be happening in the Great Hall, or the Canada Hall on the third floor, so we just wanted to provide you with this information. Sometimes, when you go to a new facility and you haven't been there before, it's hard to orient yourself, so we just want to make that a little bit easier. But then again, my experience is when in doubt, just follow the masses. They usually take you to the right spot. I'm not going to go through each individual issues, but these are the meetings that we have secured. The Minister of Research, Innovation and Science is not attending, so this is always a good reason why you don't get a meeting with them, but, you know, the parliamentary assistant was eager to meet with us. And this is just really branching off into some of the new discussions that we're having at the city, especially as it relates to innovation, the university post-secondary education. You know, we are working with our proponents on developing something that's different, so we can start having that conversation with the province from that research and development that kind of falls under their purview, to say, here's where we're going, here's where we want to go to. How can we tap into your ministry to move forward? Natural Resources and Forestry, you know, I always say that, you know, AMO is one point in time. We continue to advocate on a year-round basis, and we should be doing that. So, even yesterday, we had staff from the Municipal Affairs, MNRF, actually come here, and Laurie and Farrah was able to provide them a tour of Riverwalk, so they can actually start to begin to appreciate what it is that we're doing. And hopefully, some of them will be at the AMO conference, so when the minister is there, they can say, yeah, you know, we understand this, and, you know, we understand what they're trying to do, so we can move the administration side on. And for the speaking note, Councilwoman Moore, we also invited the minister to come here for the same tour. I think that's a good opportunity for her to be here and actually see it firsthand. Transportation is probably, there's going to be a lot of delegations talking about transportation. We have a number of issues, but our focus here really is on the LRT extension mobility hubs. During the workshop, as well as what I communicated out to council following that, is there was interest to at least start a conversation on the highway areas around 407 and the 410, to how we can have easier access to those new developed lands. So, this is, we don't necessarily have a specific ask, other than just to start planting the seeds for future conversations with the Minister of Transportation. About 30 minutes after we delegate, the Region Appeal is going to be delegating, so they're going to be talking about the GTA West, and that's, we've been working with their staff to ensure that we're lockstep, especially are asked to advance the environmental assessment. Advanced education skills development, you know, message here is to thank the minister, to thank the minister for giving the city an opportunity to have different types of conversations, but also to start planting the seeds, you know, the city of Brampton, it's, you know, we're unique. We're growing. We're large today, but we're going to be even larger by 2041. So, you know, we're appreciative of the $180 million, but, you know, our briefing note talks about, you know, perhaps we need to ask for a little bit more than just the 50-50 percent. So, just to start asking her, you know, what is her idea in terms of how that funding is going to be committed? We also see growing this post-secondary education past 1,000 students. You know, the city again is growing, so we have to think that longer term. So, what is, you know, what is going to be our needs in the future, 25, 30, 40 years? So, how can we help work with the ministry to grow that, you know, 5,000 to 10,000 students into the future? Municipal Affairs, Regional Representation, our note tries to be as clear and focused on this and be very direct to the minister, but again, Councilwoman Miles, if you want to be even harsher, we will leave that up to your prerogative, but we did try to be very clear that we're running out of runway here, and we need to get the government to act on this today. And on the secondary units and right-of-entry, our message is clear that, you know, this is an issue. There's not only a, you know, health and safety side, but it's also a financial impact to municipalities. We have leaders of both opposition parties. Yesterday, I just found out that Anja Horvath has kind of reduced it by five minutes, by, so it'll be 25 minutes. They're going to be receiving all issues that we are talking about during the conference, but we really wanted to focus on three, so we proposed regional governance. So, asking the opposition parties is, how can you help us, A, to get this through now? Or if not, if you were to form government, how are you going to resolve this? Because just like the increased seats provincially, we're growing, and we need to have that same representation. So, there's going to be now five dedicated MPPs in Brampton. And that's primarily based on population growth, so we need to translate that same message to the province. Transit-transportation issues, you know, this is a concern for many municipalities. You know, there's a lot of positive things happening, but what is their vision for trans? What is their vision for transportation? How do they plan on investments? Things like, you know, high-speed rail, Go RER. Health partnerships, we're working really closely with William Oster. It's disappointing that Minister Hoskins is not participating in the conference, but working with the hospital, William Oster's, this is a concern. Our hospitals have reached capacity already, and there's, we need additional funding to actually ensure our emergency departments are fully operational and provide other services accordingly. While we're not meeting with Minister Shirelli, Minister of Infrastructure, nor, as I mentioned, Minister Hoskins, Health and Long-Term Care, we do provide the notes to the leaders of the opposition. So, as you're out and about during the conference, if you bump into somebody, if you bump into Ministry of Health staff, at least you'll have the notes, and you'll be able to have some of the key talking points that you can share with them. And final preparations, while today will hopefully be the last time you hear from me, orally, you will at least have both Harry and myself throughout the conference. We're going to be there to help you answer any questions that kind of come up, help guide you in case, you know, there's a change in meetings. Our schedule is only as updated as yesterday. Things can change the day before or the day of. We're working with Communications to draft a media release, just to ensure that that's coordinated, and we'll send that out at the appropriate time. And the last question actually sparked from Councilwoman Dillon when I was speaking with him. It's, what is the best way to communicate to the delegation and our team going to AMO? It could be by email. We've also investigated WhatsApp. But we just want, the point here is we just want to make sure that if there's any last-minute changes, or hey, by the way, are you able to attend to this meeting? You can receive that, at least from myself, as efficiently, as effectively as possible. So, with that, I hope you're really excited about AMO. I think we have a really good lineup scheduled for you, and we really look forward to working with you moving forward. So, thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dillon.
Yeah, you just, sorry, thanks for the presentation. Just alluded to, I guess, what I wanted to, just to, I guess, address is a quick communication for everybody. So, I guess even if we have an email chain that, or we can set our phones that it provides a, you know, special alert that when you email, so we can at least know if there's something important or urgent coming up, that we can all be notified. If something last-minute comes, I just know from my experiences, for example, at FCM, sometimes you need to know right away, or sometimes you need to inform everybody right away. So, even a text group or something like that, or just even provide everybody's contact number, so just in case something does come up. And second comment is, when do we get our shirts, t-shirts? You got them?
Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you. Lowell, thank you very much. I don't think the city of Brampton's ever been as prepared as we are going to AMO. In fact, you know, I think it's known that a number of us just didn't go to AMO anymore, because you can only sit in on so many workshops, you weren't feeling like you were really advancing and advocating for your city when you were sitting in, you know, listening to some speakers on something where Brampton probably was ahead of the game on some of those issues anyway. So, you've made us excited to go to AMO. And I haven't had a chance to go through the binder that you sent around for us this morning, that I guess is weekend reading. But on the Municipal Affairs and Housing, and I don't know whether you've included anything or not in it, but one of the, you know, I've said it many times, that secondary units in homes are a consequence of not having good quality affordable rental units. And I think what we're seeing now, actually in the city of Brampton, is some interest in building rental units. Medallion is building them. Others who own rental properties are looking at how they intensify their sites and so on. Is part of the package talking about how the province can participate in stimulating the rental construction market out there? So that, you know, I don't think it's individuals or families' first choice to live underground if there was good quality available inventory in the city of rental units. So, I don't know whether it's part of it. Maybe it's something that Councilwoman Miles, as the primary, and myself as primary and secondary, can sort of turn our minds to. But I think that a lot of the federal and provincial programs have expired, and they need to be revisited and reinvented in today's housing market.
The note touches, the note doesn't specifically address the rental, but I did include a couple of points in the speaking points.
Okay.
Especially around, because we know in the Region Appeal, we have a very long waitlist, and it is an issue, so we can work with you in terms of the speaking points.
Perfect.
To tighten that up.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilwoman Miles.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'm pretty sure that I will be addressing affordable housing under the regions grouping of speakers, so I'll take a look at how I cross-reference those two initiatives.
Okay. Councilwoman Moore, you're back on the board?
Yeah, I am, because I wasn't speaking specifically of, you know, what we traditionally think of as affordable housing. I'm just talking about rental units in the city. A lot of times, the only thing that's available is somebody puts their main floor of their house or the basement of their home, or their condo unit up for rent. I'm talking about pure rental buildings. The Blade is going to be one of them. You know, there's been the new one that Preston Group have built in Bramley. We're starting to see some interest in building it. I think that that would probably be first choice for renters, many who can afford market rent. It's finding a good quality market rent unit. So, it's not just the affordable housing piece, which I think has a distinct and separate need in not just the city, but the Region Appeal, probably right across the GTA. But I'm talking about folks who don't want to own for a whole variety of reasons, but need a good quality rental, so thank you.
I think leaving that in within the 15-minute.
We can try to squeeze that in. We just have to speak fast. Thanks.
I have a motion moved by Councilwoman Willans, seconded by Councilwoman Bowman, that the presentation be received. All those in favor? Let's carry. Councilwoman Fortini, 16.2, I, in errors, sped through my agenda. You wanted to speak about Avondale Park.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. It's okay. I forgive you.
Thank you.
A little bit disturbed on the weekend, on Sunday, in the long, was at Ching Park, and I had a couple of residents tell me that we're selling Avondale Park to build high-rises. So, I know what to answer. And Monday, sorry, on yesterday, another resident asked me at another place. So, I think we owe the residents, we have to tell them what's going on, and if it's true, it's not true, because they're going to start sending emails.
Through the chair, I'm not sure where they're getting that information. Council has not declared any property surplus or looking to sell any of those properties, so I'm not sure where that's coming from. They can certainly give me a call if you'd like, and I can speak to them personally, but I'm not sure where that information is coming from.
Okay, thank you, just to clarify. Thank you.
Okay. We're now at item 19, public question period. This is where we invite members of the public to come forward to the podium to ask questions about any decision made by council at today's meeting. There's a 15-minute limit for all questions to answer. Are there any questions from the public about a decision made by council at today's meeting? Come on down. If you wouldn't mind stating your name for the record.
My name is Yvonne Squires, and I'm going to talk about two issues. I must commend Councilwoman Miles.
I'm sorry, you were going to talk about?
The charges for facilities that belong to the residents of Brampton. And if there is a charge for one, there should be a charge for all. And I commend Gail Miles for allowing some and some not allowed. I would like to know why the Conservatory was allowed free of charge for Mozart, and this other person was not allowed, which none should have been allowed if there is a rule. Okay? Because I, as a matter of fact, I'm talking on behalf of the silent majority of people in Brampton that cannot be here today. Okay? So, this is the reason why I want to know why one was chosen and one was not chosen. There may be a reason, but, you know, we have to be consistent with rules until rules have been changed. Okay, another thing, can I go on to another thing?
I'm not sure you, we weren't going to give you an answer today as to why.
Okay.
If you have another question about today's agenda.
Okay. No, I need to make a comment about what?
If you can put it in the form of a question, because this is public question.
Okay, what I want to find out also, why was this printed about your councillor, John Sproweary? I cannot pronounce your name or stuff. Excuse me. The comments in this paper was not good for the councillor. And how do we know, first to begin with, I want to tell you, you're not a racist. And we have to be careful or we throw around that word racist and racism. It's not everything one say constitute racism. And you're not a racist. I did some investigation on who you are and your accomplishments in this forum, and you have done a lot for Brampton and for the Brampton residents. I don't know how long you will be here, but it's not nice and it's not fair for you to be walking away with that label as a racist. So, I want to tell you, speaking on behalf of the silent majority in my community, they don't think you're a racist, okay? Because you were responding, maybe the words you said, you could have said differently, but it did not constitute racism. And the mayor, what she wrote here, what happened previously, instigated the community to rise up.
So, Mrs. Squires, can you possibly put this in the form of a question?
Okay, so why? Okay, so why was it necessary for you to print, the mayor, to write what happened in the past? I want to know why. And we should know what led up to this councillor making that comment to this resident. I don't think, and the people I spoke with, which some of the people here knows that I go to different events and people ask me, and if there is any racist sitting on this board, they should not be here. Okay? And furthermore, the person who asked the question, why do white people run in Brampton? Every white person sitting here have a right to be here, because they were elected. They were not just chosen and put here. Maybe we don't agree with it, but they are elected. I could say why there is no black here, but they were not elected. And I would like to know, why was it necessary for the mayor to make these comments? Please. Because that really instigated the community. Because if he has been a racist, and you are aware of it all along, why was it tolerated?
So Mrs. Squires, you're allowed to ask questions about what happened at this meeting.
Okay, all right. I'm asking questions.
So I think your question may be to Councilor Spolvieri, but it is not to me, because that's not the subject of today's meeting.
But you wrote this in the paper.
I appreciate that you've read something in the paper, and you want to ask questions, but that's not the subject of today's council meeting, and that's what you're allowed to ask questions about. So if you have no other questions about today's meeting subject, Councilor Spolvieri, do you want to respond?
When he spoke at today's meeting?
I understand, and you can ask questions of what he said today at today's meeting.
Okay, I'm going to ask some questions. Do you think your comments warranted that everybody's printing this, that you're a racist?
I don't, I, first of all, my email was directed to a constituent.
Yes.
And there was some members of council staff and some members of the mayor and her staff copied, and someone leaked that email to the media, which I think was totally improper, because that conversation on email was strictly between a constituent and myself, and the people who were being attacked. And so I believe that whoever leaked that email was, did a disservice to Brampton and to the council and to the staff.
I agree with that.
Secondly, I don't believe I'm a racist by saying white values, because, first of all, white is not a race. There's one race. There's a human race. The human race is divided in three, three particular segments. There's Caucasians, which are mostly Europeans and people from Southern, Middle East and Southern Asia.
Yeah.
Then you have the African, the Negroid, which is mostly African, and then you have the Magloids, which is mostly the Oriental people. So by saying the word white, it's not certainly not a racist comment, because there's no such thing as a white race. And so I certainly don't think that it was ever meant to be a racist comment at all. It just, I believe it was taken out of context by my opponents, and they made some hay, and I think that they did that just to perhaps try to get some brownie points, political brownie points, which I believe did not happen at all, because based on the emails that I received, people did not appreciate some of the comments that were made at all. And so I think that all backfired.
Yes, I think so.
But I think that there was a good opportunity to really, it gave me an opportunity to really express what I really believe, and how I feel about Canadians and the multicultural makeup of Canadians.
We are all thinking what you wrote here, and we are all thinking the same thing.
So thank you, Mrs. Squires.
But we are not saying it.
Thank you, Mrs. Squires. Appreciate you for being here.
Thank you very much for your support.
Okay.
And understand it.
And when you walk away from this forum or this arena, keep in mind, you have done a lot for your constituency, because I did investigate, and I did check you out, and you're not a racist. Okay?
Thank you.
And the person who wrote that email to you, I would more say she's a racist.
Well, I think so, too.
Okay, so, thanks for the time.
Thank you, Mrs. Squires. Any other speakers in the audience who want to ask questions? Seeing none, we're now at the portion of the meeting dealing with the adoption of our city bylaws to give effect to council decisions made at this meeting and previous meetings. I have a motion moved by, is that Councilor Willens's signature? And Councilor Bowman, to approve the bylaws. All those in favor? Let's carry. Our next item of business is technically item 21, this closed-session business. Are there any councillors who wish to go into closed session to discuss the minutes? If not, we can deal with them here. Move by Councilor Willens, Councilor Bowman, that council not proceeding to closed session to discuss matters pertaining to the following 21.1 minutes of our closed-session City Council of July 5th, and acknowledge the closed-session minutes in open session. All those in favor? Let's carry. Our next item of business is item 22, confirming bylaw. I have a motion moved by Councilor Willens, seconded by Councilor Bowman, to approve the confirming bylaw, to confirm the proceedings and decisions from this meeting. All those in favor? Actually, don't have enough. All those in favor? Let's carry. Our last item of business is item 23, adjournment. Thank you, members, for your respectful consideration and decisions today. Thank you, staff, for your information and your advice. Council's next scheduled meeting is September 13th at 9:30 in the morning, that's a Wednesday, and Wednesday, September 27th at 9:30. I have a motion moved by Councilor Willens, seconded by Councilor Bowman, that council do now adjourn to meet again for regularly scheduled meeting on Wednesday, September 13th at 9:30, or at the call of the mayor. All those in favor? All those opposed? Let's carry. This meeting's adjourned. Please enjoy the rest of your day.